Good evening, welcome to the Board of Trustees organizational meeting for Tuesday, January 4th, 2022. I call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Please stand for the indication.
Hi, Evan. Thank you for staying in the township. Nice sunny one. I pray for you be it those who are protecting us, give us some freedoms, keep that in place for us. Give them strength, give their families strength that they miss over the holiday season. Amen.
Amen. Please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it spans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Rogers, please call roll.
McKee.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
At this time, I turn the meeting over to the fiscal officer for board appointments.
Judy Delvin? Yes. Okay, the nominations for the office of president.
All right, Mr. Evans?
Second.
Any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Nominations be closed. McKee?
You might want to explain, Molly. When you're doing the nominations, he'll say your name and then you say who you want to nominate.
Oh, I want to nominate Mark Evans.
We're voting now. Now we're voting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're voting now.
Who do you want?
Nominations are closed.
You're right. Just, we're just going to say his name.
Mark Evans. Sorry.
Okay, Evans?
Evans.
Johnson?
Evans.
Sorry.
Well, figure.
Now, you're going to do that to every one of them through that first section. Every one of them through the first section, you're going to say the last name of them and you'll pick them like that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rogers. I'll entertain nominations for vice president. I nominate McKee. Any other nominations? Right, nominations are closed. Roll, please.
McKee?
Yes. Evans? McKee.
Evans?
Johnson?
Oh, I'm sorry, McKee. We'll get it.
McKee.
All right, okay, so McKee is vice president. Now we'll do nominations for road supervisor.
I'm going to nominate Mark Evans.
Okay, I nominate Johnson. Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Call roll, please.
McKee?
Evans.
Evans.
Johnson?
Johnson.
Evans.
All right, now we'll do nominations for township secretary supervisor. Any nominations for township secretary supervisor?
Evans.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Call roll, please.
McKee?
Evans.
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 Johnson.
Evans.
All right. Now nominations for township zoning supervisor. Want your choices? Any nominations for township zoning supervisor?
I'm going to nominate Evans.
Any other nominations for township zoning supervisor? Nominations are closed. Roll, please.
McKee?
Evans.
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 Johnson?
Evans.
Nominations for safety and FEMA officer? I nominate Johnson also. Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Roll, please.
McKee?
Johnson.
Evans?
Johnson.
Johnson?
Johnson.
Nominations for park and recreations director?
Nominate McKee.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Roll, please.
McKee?
McKee.
Evans?
McKee.
Johnson?
McKee.
Nominations for cemetery director? I'll nominate McKee. Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Roll, please.
McKee?
McKee.
Evans?
McKee.
Johnson?
McKee.
Nominations for communications and public relations officer?
I'm going to nominate Evans.
Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Roll, please.
McKee?
Evans.
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 Johnson?
Evans.
Nominations for West Lincoln Fire Department or District Board Representative?
I'm going to nominate Johnson.
Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Roll, please.
McKee?
Johnson.
Evans?
Johnson.
Johnson?
Johnson.
Nominations for representative to morpsey board? I'll nominate myself, Evans. Any other nominations?
McKee.
Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Roll, please.
McKee?
McKee.
Evans?
Evans.
Johnson?
McKee.
Nominations for representative on PAC Economic Development Committee?
Nominate McKee.
I'll nominate Evans.
Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Roll, please.
McKee?
Evans.
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 Johnson?
Evans.
Nominations as trustee to approve township community center requests, I'll nominate Johnson. Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Roll, please.
McKee?
Johnson.
Evans?
Johnson.
Johnson?
Johnson. Nominations as liaison trustee to the Board of Zoning Appeals?
I want to nominate Johnson.
Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Roll, please.
McKee?
Johnson.
Evans?
Johnson.
Johnson?
Johnson.
Nominations as liaison trustee to the zoning commission?
I want to nominate Johnson.
Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Roll, please.
McKee?
Johnson.
Evans?
Johnson.
Johnson?
Johnson.
That concludes that. We'll move on to... There we go. Organizational resolutions. I move to adopt organizational motions, item A through G, as presented on agenda with Mr. Johnson as township representative for health consortium. Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion?
Do we want to discuss times and meetings changes on B, item B?
I think so. Do we want to bring it back to the consistent Tuesday, first Tuesday and third Tuesday at 6:00 PM? And for kind of community outreach on the weekends, kind of have, can you do other events itself to bring people in?
That's all I was thinking. So the first submission, the first Tuesday of the month at 6:00 PM and the third Tuesday of the month at 6:00 PM, is that what I want to get?
So you want to motion to amend those, those changes?
Yes, I'm filed the organizational one that's 6:00 PM, January 3rd, 2023 is good.
Okay. Any comments?
Oh, I think that's...
Does that work for everybody? I think it works for the community, between six o'clock and seven o'clock meetings. Hopefully it's during about that. Okay, so are you motioning to change that?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I guess we had the discussion. Roll?
McKee?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And that was under amendments, so now we have to prove all correct. Okay, so I move to adopt the organizational motions as amended, items A through G, with Mr. Johnson as township representative for health consortium. Is there a second? McKee seconds. Discussion? Roll?
McKee?
Yes.
Johnson?
Evans? Yes.
Johnson?
Passed. Then I move to adopt the organizational motions, items H through L, as presented on the agenda with the board members, receiving $55 and the chairperson $80 a meeting along with $55 plus gas, plus mileage to attend necessary training. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? I know the previous amounts were $50 and $75 respectively. The last change was in 2018. That increase of $5 is merely inflation and I think fairly bad, so I just want to keep that out. Okay, because I don't think anybody's doing it for the money. It's just kind of whether it's got some... Any comments?
No comments.
Roll?
McKee?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes this organizational meeting. I move to adjourn this meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Then roll. Correct.
McKee?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
At times 6:15 PM. Okay, we'll go to the regular meeting. Call this meeting to order at 6:15 PM. I move to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? I would actually like to amend the agenda to add comprehensive plan, live streaming, removal of inactive part-time employees, and audit as items F through I under new business. Also correcting the new business labels B through D to C through E. B's marked twice there. Is there a second?
Does he have to do it too fast?
Okay, sorry. Move to amend the agenda to add comprehensive plan...
Where's this under here?
Of new business.
New business, okay.
Comprehensive plan, live streaming, removal of inactive part-time employees, and audit as items F through I under new business. Also correcting the new business labels B through D to C through E, as there's two of them are marked P's. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? For me, these are just items that I wanted to address on the agenda. I didn't create this agenda, so I at least want to present this under new business. Any other discussion? McKee?
No.
Johnson? Roll?
McKee?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And I'm allowed to prove that. So I move to approve the agenda as amended. Is there a second? That was to amend it. Now we're approving. Correct?
You only have to do it once.
Do it once? Okay. All right, so then adoption of minutes. The draft minutes from the last special meeting on not, are 12, 29, 21, were sent to us on 1, 3, 22. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Are there any?
No corrections.
If there are no corrections, I motion to adopt the meeting minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Johnson seconds. Discussion? Roll call?
McKee?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Now, we're at my formerly favorite, our public comments. You have three minutes if anybody would like to come up and speak. You're more than welcome to.
Good evening, my name is John Vincent. I live at 143 Ellington Boulevard in Grandville, Ohio, and I am also the president of the Southwest Lincoln Board of Education. And on behalf of the Southwest Lincoln Board of Education, I'd like to congratulate the new trustees and address this new board. We are excited for this new beginning and are eager to work with you for the betterment of both of our constituencies and our shared community. We appreciate your willingness to work and talk openly with us and look forward to honest, sincere dialogue for years to come. Thank you, and again, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Anybody else? Don't forget anybody's names wrong, please forgive me. I've had names.
Chuck Bundy, 10254 Tollgate Road. I guess this is directed at Mr. Evans because he is the new road supervisor. Tollgate Road has become an avenue for 18-wheel trucks because of the proximity to FedEx warehouses. There used to be a sign at the beginning of Tollgate Road that said, "No through trucks, $1,000 fine." That sign has been removed. I ask that that sign be reinstated to keep, at least try to keep the 18-wheelers from tearing up Tollgate Road because it's going to happen. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Definitely will look into that. Mr. Sabatino?
Good evening, I'm Ron Sabatino with Cumberland Bar and Grill, it's up on Columbia Avenue. My question is kind of addressed to each of you, including Jester's, kind of the historian here. What is, you know, kind of the general view of development, you know, during the campaign and so forth? There's a lot of innuendo and comment, but how do each of you feel regarding the various uses and developments that have happened historically and how do you see it in the future? Again, I'm not talking about how you want to vote for some applicant that may come in to do this or do that, but it's generally as relates to future commercial and future residential development in town. Now, you know, we're all kind of handcuffed with the fiasco going up the street from our neighbors here that are in charge of the water and sewer, but notwithstanding that issue, how do you all feel about it?
Thank you. I guess I could address that quickly. I mean, I'm for development, good development. Commercial development helps the residential areas in our township, you know, takes the pressure off. So definitely need to have good development and just need to make sure it's well planned. So I look forward to working with the developers and businesses and residents for, to ensure this is a vibrant community and sustainable.
I ran on development. We know development is going to come to Aetna. We're not, I'm not against development. I just wanted to see it as a mixed community. We have a lot of warehouses coming, they're bringing jobs, but also we want to see more mom and pop businesses here in Aetna. The residents spoke, they want to see more ruralness to stay in Aetna, but more mom and pop businesses. So we're not at all against development. We welcome the development, but just, we want to make sure that we have a mixed community of development here in Aetna, not just all warehouses. So that's, that's what we're looking forward to, to working with the people in Aetna as well as the developers.
We've approved many developments in the community already for housing to commercial, to In-1 type things around here. We've made them fit mostly where they've been, they're together, pieces fit and to make things work. Got a park now, the housing was all around the park that we approved for the most part. Development has been almost mostly right around places we thought we'd have In-1, which is right next to the freeway here, by the farms up there at the Parkway. I think if the pieces fit in future, we have that beautiful place we have just to south here, that's a huge development that has yet to move here ground to. We don't have that to go fit in. Everything we've done is in a piece that's fit in with what we're, what is out here and kind of a plan that we have, we're comprehensive and use plan at some point. There are some things that moved around on that. We're getting ready to review the conference of planning again, so if pieces fit into that, I'm looking forward to working with those people. There's places to develop right now here that are already been approved, so we can work with that to start with.
Anybody else have public comments?
Mr. Holloway? Steve Holloway, 1047 York Road. I want to start. I have the information I passed along a couple of months ago. It's a little dated, it's updated now. The Taylor Road overpass will start construction April 2026 with finalizing no later than early 23rd. This is how to be on that set. I wanted to talk about infrastructure and the problem we're having right now. As you know, I'm part of the planning commission, but with the county, we brought these commissioners' attention and also the planning commission. Not a whole lot what we can do, but we know about it, we're trying to beat out financially if we can do anything. Water Sewer District is, they're having some issues right now, mainly with sewer. And I think Mr. Sabatino, he knows well, he's well aware, but I think somebody who are too. Right now, the sewer is 2.6 million gallons a day capacity and running 2.3 to 2.5. They're at, they're at capacity. Some of the roads are actually overflowing on sewer. The problem is, is everything on Broad Street, Summit, Main, North, South 70, everything runs through that and it's running through an 18-inch line. They just can't get all through. When we talk about building, the only good thing about warehouses is they don't use a lot of water in sewer. They use about 100 houses worth, though Amazon, for instance, is using about 30,000 gallons a day, Love's is 20,000. 100 homes does about 35,000 gallons. It kind of gives you an idea of what it would take. Right now, the mixed use, which I think is probably one of the best mixed use examples in the entire Little County, at 310 in Aetna here is, I don't want to say it's on hold, but they're struggling now because they're no sewer capacity to get that thing going, even though it's quieted out. Some of the things that are going on that, that's stressing this situation, we've got a Royal subdivision on Smoke Road going in, we have Smoke Creek, housing development, Coles has three more buildings, Love's has two more buildings, Tollgate has a new warehouse building, Aetna Industrial Parts expanding, we've got the mixed use, 310 and 70, we've got a motel going in on 310, we've got by, I'm sorry, by Victor McDonald's, we have residential apartments looking at 310 North and 40, and it just goes on. So there's a lot of stuff going on. The problem is, is that when EPA came in here and said we had to put in a water sewer district because we have certain tanks that were just overflowing, they didn't expect this type of growth. This happens so fast, you can't keep up. So right now, at least in the short term, we've got an issue. And those developments, what I just talked about, is about 500,000 gallons a day is what's going to put on the system. So, but the good news is, is that the RFP went out in October for a wastewater treatment plant later, will be at 40, and Main Road, it'll do 1.5 million gallons a day, expandable to 4 million, but it's not going to be done until 2025 if everything goes well, and it's a $22 million prize. There's another sewage plant going in North and there's a couple other things going on, but a water tower, we're in discussion for the water tower at 310, South 70. The reason I want to bring this up too is that the JED, we can redistribute the JED funds. The water district is not getting any money for the most part from that, and they've been very, sorry, Jeff, you're a good friend of mine, but been very selfish with mine. A million dollars to the fire district, you get zero to the water, you give to the sewer district, and they're the ones in trouble and are handling all our development. They need our help. If there's any way that you guys can look at helping them through redistribution of JED or any other kind of funds, I mean, it'll help them very easily. They're trying, they got a 4.1 million dollar grant for expansion, but that only covers 50%. They got to pump for, for another $4 million, so it's not easy. Last thing I want to say is I think Trent Stepp is our representative. I think it's important, I haven't seen him in a long time, I think it's important that he, he's here at least, you know, three, four times a year in front of this board saying what's going on over there. So it keeps you guys up to date, keeps the community up to date and what we're facing, because there's a lot of stuff going on over there that I think is real important.
I appreciate it, thank you. Any other? Oh, yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Newton, 162 Deer Path Court. I'm here to, on a recommendation from our Sheriff's Department, on my street, they put up no parking signs and all the cul-de-sacs, and that was due to a... And that was due to a complaint that a lady had from people parking in front of her house when she is no longer here. Problem is, is that nobody really parks their cars on the cul-de-sac. The problem is though, when we have guests come over. We have, I have a son who's graduating this year. You know, we need that, and my neighbor across the street, his son is graduating this year. And what's, what's been happening is, is that people come around in the neighborhood and see ours parked on the street forever, but they could just be running in because everybody parks in their driveway. They call the Sheriff's Department and they come and tell us to move our cars in our driveway. I don't think that's a, good for them to go away from their jobs, tell people to move their cars. So I've talked to a couple of Sheriff's deputies coming by and they asked me, they said the best thing to do is come to a trustee meeting to recommend removing these signs. It's not a problem in our area, but because they're up in other people's areas, it's a nitpick kind of thing. And so I understand that the mail has to come through, there could be restrictions for when you can be on the street, so mail can come through, snow removal, trash pickup, things like that. It's not a constant thing, but when you do have guests come over, my event is in May, it'd be nice to have my family and friends come by, but it, it does propose a problem when you have multiple cars and you have to always constantly move out. And so I don't see a problem being like after 6 o'clock or something like that, somebody's on the street, if they're leaving by 7 o'clock, there's no traffic coming through, there's no businesses coming through. Understand about fire, they said because of the fire engines have to come around, but it's wide enough for our safety people to come through. So, thank you for listening to us.
Definitely, and before you leave, if I could get your number?
Phone number?
Yeah.
614.
How do you want to do it up there?
Yeah. 571. 8912.
I will definitely get in touch. Chuck, are you familiar with one of those?
All picked up.
It was a year ago, year and a half ago?
About a year ago?
A year and a half ago, yes, they came in there. I got two in front of my house, so I'm at a disadvantage. But really, you go by there, there's nobody on the street literally, everybody parks in their driveway. It's just when we have to have, need to do that, you know, to go on. But the Sheriff's Deputy recommended that I come here and speak to you first of all.
Is that something we can do to time limit it or is that needed? Was that due to the fire, you're on the fire district?
Yeah, we explored a lot of different avenues, I corrected the problem. At the time, there was like cars parked all around like a timer circle. So nobody's mail picked up, they get that in there, and the cars were always there. They didn't come over the middle until the spot.
What do you have, what, your neighbors have, a bunch of kids, have a bunch of kids drive?
Uh, no.
Move them out?
A lot of people have moved out since they put their signs up.
Yeah, they split, they have.
Nobody really, my neighbor, he has four cars, but they're in his driveway. I got four, I got three in the garage, one's in driveway. Other neighbor, he, he expanded his driveway, all his cars are in, so nobody's on the street. But everybody does have, I mean, we all have events that we would like to host and not have to have somebody come by and tell us, oh, you have to move down the street.
We have all kinds of complaints and stuff about it.
It started on the street over with the lady who's no longer here.
Yeah.
But for, for people to call, for people who doesn't even live in the cul-de-sac, to call them, call them to tell us to come move because they have to do it, I think that's kind of a, a kind of thing.
So they couldn't park in that until then they went, was that what's happening?
What do they do, what do they do about snow and removal and?
Well, if they just, they.
They have to do those.
Yeah, I would say, I would say that, you know, no parking, there's no.
Yeah, there's a thing on the Alpen Road.
Did you guys do anything about time or used to like it? I mean, it's a brief, but you know, if you guys went through it, we think you might.
Prosecutors, they were coming to that vessel to do that.
Go press.
And it couldn't really force it until we had the sheriff. And once we had the sheriff, so then we were able to force this, but that's, that's kind of our first shot tried because we've had other times that we had the same issue with different, in different places. And so we wanted to see how, we tried there to see how it worked, basically. Because that's where all the plates would come from, like that, that time instead of somewhere else.
Yeah, no, there was no complaints in our area.
So maybe if, if the problem's fixed itself, maybe we could.
Remove it or the time thing, we'll, we'll address it and get back to you. Hopefully it'll be before May, but.
Yeah.
So yeah, we'll, we'll talk to prosecutor and see. I'm catching up on what's been going on, I'll look back at the meeting and we'll definitely get back to you.
Great, appreciate it.
Our thing's.
Call me tonight.
What time's it Friday?
Hey, there's no parking though.
You know, the salespeople will be calling you. Hi, I'm Roger Deebel Barrett. I live at 533 Ballman Road. I have two complaints, both of them sort of related to vehicles. Ballman Road has a pollution problem of old junk cars. Cars that have been there for years and years and are still there. Jumpers. And I sure would appreciate if you could get the zoning folks on stick about getting rid of some of these cars. Now, I'm sure people have great intentions, you know, they're going to fix this car, fix it and stuff. Every time I pull out of my driveway, I look at a couple of doors down and there's a, I think a 1999 Chevrolet something or other. It's sat there for so long that the tires are all flat now. It's probably a home for a, for a deserving family of mice, that sort of thing. But that's not the worst way in our neighborhood, and I'm sure that Ballman Road is not the only one that has these hangers sitting around. And they're doing nothing for property values or the good looks to the neighborhood.
You know what, Roger, can you give me a list of addresses?
Yes, I sure can.
You should tell me what I'm, sorry inspector, check those out.
Okay. My other concern is with the National, National Road Tire Service at 12976 National Road. It's just east of Main Street. This tire service performs a good service for the, for the township. I've bought numerous new tires online for my car and I take them down there and they have a mountain balance and reasonable price, really reasonable price. My concern about this place is there are more than 1,000 tires stacked up outside that building, to the east of it and to the south of it. And the last time I was inside the building, you could hardly move in their, in their surface bay because of more tires. They can't pull a car in there anymore when the weather's bad to work on it because the place is full of tires. Well, a few years ago, we're at Order Day or someplace, they had a, a monster tire fire, or, yeah. Now, this wouldn't be that big, but I'm sure it would burn up that corner.
Have you talked to the zoning inspector at all about this or no?
Yes, I brought it to this panel before.
Oh, have you?
And nothing's happened.
Are you familiar with that?
Now.
I'll look into it.
Yeah, when the weather's nice, of course, all those tires provide a wonderful place for a mosquito's breed.
Well, they could use more remover on that other junk car or something.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, they know they've got that one, they're leaving by four, but then what, what they can do with the tires to take off or whatever.
Okay, yeah, I'll definitely look into that, get back with you.
Yeah, so welcome aboard, folks.
All right, thank you. Any other?
I'm Sarah Ferguson at 43 Ballman, and I can agree that there are a lot of just sitting vacant cars on Ballman. I also have a question about vacant buildings. I just feel like there's always, anywhere you go, I've seen vacant houses or vacant buildings, dilapidated structures. We actually, I taught my kid that we're dilapidated. He knows what that is now, so drive by, we just, I feel like houses that have just sat vacant since I've lived here two and a half years. Is there like a zoning type of restriction about how long something sits vacant?
As far as I know, if it's maintained, I don't think there is.
Yeah, if it's maintained, it's not a problem, vacant. If it's not maintained, then there's an issue with that, we can address that.
Okay. Well, I also actually saw the one next to the Amazon warehouse that just went for sale. I saw that one, it's just been sitting there forever since Amazon. It's right where that bend is, there's like a bend, like it almost blocks the driveway, like blocks the entire house. So it just seems, it's just little icons like that, you know? If, if the property owner isn't going to take care of the property, they're paying taxes on the structure. I don't understand why, I mean, yeah, it's those taxes, but still it's putting value on the community. And that was really, my question is about vacant houses and if there's restrictions.
If you can give me addresses, give us addresses on this, we'll have our zoning inspector look at them.
Okay.
Are they being maintained or improved?
There's a couple that I've seen that are not. I mean, there's actually two vacant houses on our street. And I just think with property values too, I mean, you see property values skyrocketing right now, but there's no homes available. But they, we have two vacant houses on our street and nobody's living there. So it's just, to me, just sell them, yeah.
Yeah, I had two in our neighborhood, like two and a half, three years, just sat vacant.
Yeah, just, you know, that's just creating more issues with being able to sell houses and buy, sell properties. So it just, that was my question, if there's.
Yeah, we can address it if there's a, if there's issues, if there's issue with the house.
Yeah, we have a very small community, there's like maybe 100 houses, two of them are vacant. So.
And sometimes there's deeper restrictions in neighborhoods, I'm not sure if Ballman really has those, but you can, they might be different, and you might be able to enforce that in a different way. I know New England Acres has deeper restrictions and then the zoning covers it also, so it's something to look into.
All right, thank you.
Dan Ridge, 78 Rockwell Drive. I just want to pose a question, I wasn't sure the legality of it, but I know Tascal has touched on it, the possibility of a moratorium on development. I'm not sure if it's possible, something you guys have thought about, but you know, Mr. Holloway speaking. I think until the audit of the status of current capacities of roads, sewer water, police and fire services, I know we have constant power outages recently and the AVs have talked about equipment that's maybe not up to spec for what's going on in Atna. I'm not sure if it's possible, I think that's something we can look at doing, maybe stopping applications coming in until we have the better rest of the city, the infrastructure's out.
Definitely understand your concern, and I think that's one thing, when we look at the conference of plan, we're going to take it into consideration. And I know legally wise, if you do anything like that, I think you have to be very cautious because it opens you up to litigation, but I mean, I'm sure we can deal with prosecutor and have, look at all avenues to see what, what we need to do going forward. Anybody else? Nope. The public comments are closed. Onto old business. The application submitted by El Nire was tabled on 12/29/21. The developer waived the 20-day requirement for a vote from the closing of public hearings, which occurred on 12/14/21, and they extended the date to consider to January 21st of '22. So I motioned to postpone this item until a special meeting on January 18th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
A key seconds discussion?
What was that time of day again?
January 18th.
Okay.
It's a Tuesday at 6:00 PM. The developers are available on that day.
Okay. I'll clarify that question, but Chuck, from there, that's good.
Yeah, and that is, it just gives us more time because if we did have to hear it today, I think it doesn't give us enough time to come up to speed on everything. I've been looking at all public comments before that, so I think the 18th would, would give us that time. Any other discussion?
No.
All right, roll. McKee?
Yes.
Evans? Yes. Johnson?
Yes.
All right, so that passed, so we'll have that on the 18th at 6:00 PM, be a special meeting. New business. I motioned to accept Brandon Hunt's resignation from the road crew, it was effective, I think 1-1. Is there, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second. His last day was the 31st.
There was, okay, so.
That's his last day, but.
Discussion. I just want to thank Brandon for his good service at the township and accepting this. So if there's no further discussion, roll call. McKee?
Yes.
Evans? Yes. Johnson?
Yes.
All right, and then, motion to appoint Josh Dianni as the zoning commission member for the term commencing January 1st, 2022 to December 31st, 2026. It's a five-year term. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. What I'd like to say about this is typically I'd like to advertise this, but due to the upcoming meeting, the commission needs the chairman and another resignation from the board, we'll actually be able to advertise for that one. So that's, that's why I'm moving to appoint Josh Dianni for this term. Is there any other discussion?
No.
Roll, please. McKee?
Yes.
Evans? Yes. Johnson?
Yes.
That passed unanimously. Motion to advertise for Board of Zoning Appeals and Zoning Commission Member. Is there a second?
These are the five-year terms, right? You don't have to listen.
These are, the Board of Zoning Appeals is a five-year term. It was vacant, it was formerly Great Greece. And he took over Mark Shep's term, which is expiring in 2025. But the zoning commission member is Alicia Zachar, and that's to fulfill her remaining term to the end of this year.
Yeah, 2022.
2022.
I'll second that.
All right, Johnson second, discussion. No discussion? I don't think, how are we going to announce it on the website? And when do we want to update by? Do we want to interview in the next, next meeting? Next move?
We can, yeah. We got more, what are you got? Here, we're in the paper, it's on our website, we all have it prepared, the paper and the law. We put it up on the website, we put it up on our website, so.
Okay, and actually, we could interview on the 18th because before we changed the meeting schedule, we had a regular meeting on the 15th, and we're going to do a special on the 18th for El Nire. So, but we just made that a regular, so we do have the next regular meeting.
Right.
The 18th, so took it down. Okay. Any other discussion? Roll, please. McKee?
Yes.
Evans? Yes. Johnson?
Yes.
Great, that passed unanimously. Inventories and disposals to file with the fiscal officer. Got the two resolutions here. Did everybody get the inventories? I got this before, before I. I move. I move to pass the resolution to certify the township inventory and file with the fiscal officer, Resolution 22-01-04-1. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Have you looked over the inventors you're more familiar with, what's, should be in that? Looks good, Laura, it looked good. Any other discussion?
No.
I saw the email coming.
Plus we got the email.
All right, roll. McKee?
Yes.
Evans? Yes. Johnson?
Yes.
All right. Do we set this later? Do we sign this later after the actual resolution?
Well.
Uh, and then, I move for the second resolution to remove items from the township's inventory, Resolution 22 dash 01, dash 04, dash 2. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Just need a second.
I'll second.
Johnson seconds, discussion?
This is a, no, looks like a snowplow, spreader, and a broadcaster.
Right.
Going to work or bad?
No, we're disposing of them, do we sell those, do we, this is authorized exposure with them?
Yeah, we're going to work bad, bad, so I get some scraps.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. Just allows us to get it up.
Is there any value in it, or?
I don't, I don't think so.
Probably not.
That, uh, any value it has? I mean, we take the scraps off of it, and if there's anything to use, scraps can be more, well.
Basically scrap metal or anything like that? You guys really use this stuff?
Yeah.
Any, any further discussion? Alright, Roll?
McKee?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Alright, so we've got inventory, 2022 appropriations. I believe we have temporary appropriations to pass. So I moved to pass the 2022 temporary appropriations. Is there a second?
Second.
McKee seconds, discussion? Mr. Johnson, you have, or Mr. Rogers, you have a?
I had put temporary appropriations in place for until, but you don't be.
For what time period or how?
You can only go through March 31st.
So March 31st?
We can do it if you need fire, that time we have to find out. So we do it next week, we have, we're ready for it.
Now, were those consistent with last year, just 25% of last year, were there major changes?
Not at 25%, because you got overloading in the first quarter of some items.
Were we emailing a copy of that, I don't believe that, or do you have a copy of that?
On my computer in UAM.
If I could get a copy of that, just have a meeting. But you've reviewed it, Jeff?
No, I have not.
Oh, you have not?
No, it's, it's a bare budget, just things that have to be paid, utilities.
Okay.
Payroll.
Payroll.
Insurance.
All that, so, okay, so it's not, it's just bare.
It's just bare bones.
Yeah, okay, does it, does it cover other stuff? I know, like, there's the conference end of this month, like, all those, no? So how are those handled as far as?
When you ask for my question?
How, what if in the meantime, we need to expend funds for something, emergency?
Well, then, they're voted on.
Does that include?
Meetings.
Does that include, I know, uh, in, in the organizational meeting for the $2,500 a month and expenses as needed, is that in the temporary appropriations too? If, if things are needed, supplies, anything like that?
There's, yeah, there's office supplies, that's just a limit imposed for.
I just want to make sure that everything we need, that we will expect, like, if we need more, I don't think we'll need more salt, but a repair to something, uh, Trump was into a ditch, that, that's, yeah.
Yeah, I've got that.
Okay, well, I said, maybe I have to meet in, if I could just have a copy for my records. Any other discussion?
No, no other discussions.
Okay. I move to approve the temporary appropriations as submitted by the fiscal officer. So I guess we just had a discussion, so just roll.
McKee?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, uh, then to the amended items, the comprehensive plan, I move to update the comprehensive plan, which effort would be led by myself. I will search for firms and obtain proposals to aid the update and bringing those proposals to the board for approval, and to create the comprehensive plan committee, whose members will be determined by the board with input from the firm chosen. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McKee seconds, discussion? No discussion, roll call?
McKee?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
M G, live streaming. I move to seek bids and research proper systems to livestream and archive the township meetings. Is there a second?
I'll second.
McKee seconds, discussion? I think this has been a benefit, I know I, as a resident, was doing this, doing it tonight, for the community. And I think it's something we should do. So, as far as finding the systems and legalities of the records retention standard, we can figure it out, talk to the prosecutor. I can take the lead on this if, if needed. What's your thoughts? I, I've, I've read in your baby, I think you should take a, uh, I, I've spoken to several other jurisdictions and trying to get an idea and stuff, I like.
I think that will be good, yeah.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
McKee?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Alright, then, removal of inactive part-time employees. I move to remove Freddie Latella and Carla Somar from the payroll and terminate employment. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. McKee seconds, discussion? Now this, uh, and, Mr. Johnson, correct me if I'm wrong, Freddie Latella was part-time zoning inspector, and Carla Somar was part-time office help, and they've worked for over a year for the township, correct? And they were originally just as filling as needed, so they, they haven't really been many.
Yeah, ours has been working with, with local capacity on roads, their office has been taken care of, so we really haven't had issues for me, for needing them right now.
And I've talked to Ms. Brown and Mr. Singleton, and they said that, that they're not needed, and their removal is probably.
Always have.
Just to get off the bus, we haven't used them, they're, they're employed elsewhere, then it's just to clean up the bugs, it probably should have happened a long time ago.
Or yeah, at some point, we were, we kept, I know Freddie was, we kept Freddie Latella on for reasons that he was bonded, being able to sign zoning issues if we, if needed. That was the reason we kept it on, in case I'm not good.
Now, do we need to then, because when I was talking to Singleton and Ms. Brown, they were saying, no, he wasn't needed. Should we, just in case, or where could we get, or is Steve Shul, oh, Mr. Rogers again?
Inside, we need to have to sign.
So is your opinion that to remove?
The zoning inspector isn't able to sign next, if this happens, next person to sign, that's why.
What about the Stephen Shul, is it, is he able to sign? Because I know he's been working part-time roads, part-time zone, he's kind of trying to come up to speed on some.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure he's able to sign this, having that, having whatever, bond or insurance stuff, maybe, or did that happen, be able to do that?
And he would be, you're saying the bond, not that, uh, insurance included, okay, that's a simple one. So do you agree with both of those, they're removed or? I was kind of taking the lead of what?
Well, it's probably, we're all with that, I think. That's the direction we're going, so, you know, I'm not fine with that. Clean the front lawn, it was, but.
Mr. McKee?
Yes.
Oh, no, any discussion?
Oh, no discussion, sorry.
Uh, so I will move, well, we already did that, um, so roll call?
McKee?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Alright, uh, then audit, I move to have a special audit performed and tasked by Mr. McKee with coordination of this, with the state to come back to the board with costs and specifics of the audit. Is there a second?
I second.
Mr. McKee seconds, discussion?
Just had audit done, they're looking, went here and looking to have audit done for.
Well, I think just part of proper due diligence in a board that hasn't changed in such a lengthy period. I know audits, uh, I've got a tax background and did a little bit of audit, there, there's different scopes in every audit. I'm, I'm not sure if it's necessary or not, I would just like to, for her to inquire.
Yeah, we can.
If it's necessary, and they'll, they'll come back to the board of any cost, any of.
We just haven't done the year.
Well, I know there's every two years, correct?
This was a comprehensive.
And it's not, it's just, I, from accounting of.
Well, we just had that, it was a comprehensive.
Oh, was it a comprehensive?
Okay.
Well, I.
As we've gone two years, or four years, with the, if they call it, but this last one was a comprehensive.
But I just, I'd still say, just, I, I'd like her to just check and verify, and then she can come back to the board.
That would be, I want to involve.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
McKee?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Alright, and now we are to announcements and trustee comments, Mr. Johnson, do you have any comments? Or announcements? Mr. McKee?
No.
Alright, what do you mean? I wanted to thank everybody for being here. I'm humbled that I'm able to take the seat today, the resident seat, to represent you and this community. Open communication transfer, these are priorities for me, and I look forward to making that part of Atene. Social media continues to have a significant impact on how information is shared and received. I recognize that social media can have an effective method to share information with residents and promote township initiatives. I'm inquiring with prosecutor about how best to implement these means of communications while maintaining our public records obligations. I would like to have some kind of presence, because dissemination of material is just a lot easier. One, we had fireworks display last year, and one thing I've heard is, nobody knew about it. People don't check websites, they don't, so that would be a better way to get, get the word out. I also wanted to thank the incredible township employees for all their hard work. For our township, as a resident, I've gotten to know some of you more than others. But I look forward to not only working with you, but working to make your job easier, so you can do your job better for the residents. So I wanted to thank you, and I also wanted to especially thank Laura Brown for her assistance in this transition. I know I've thrown a lot at her, you know, for this, I've thrown a lot at her before when we're going through the rezoning, and, and she's always stepped up to the plate and, and delivered, so I want to say special thanking to you. And just to everybody, I've always been open to discussing any topic with anyone, anyone, you should, everybody should know about that. Nothing will change now whether you're a resident, business, developer, or employee. So please contact me if you have any questions, comments, concerns about our township, my actions, or my decisions. Working together, I think we can ensure we maintain this great township of ours. And then I did have one announcement, Tim Bubbs, one of me to pass this up, that the Licking County Township Annual Meeting for the Association has been canceled, which was scheduled for this January 8th, due to COVID. They'll be looking at doing something in the spring or summer, such as a picnic or something outdoors. And then, as I briefly alluded to earlier, we have the Highland Township Association Conference, the end of January. We'll have to figure out payment on that, but I, I think that would be instrumental, especially us as new trustees to attend, to, to learn as much as we can. And I'm not sure if you've heard of those, but I, I think any kind of training, conference, networking is beneficial. And then the other comment was about being assigned the road crew supervisor. I, I do not mind doing, you know, a lot for the township, I've done it for the past two years. My idea was try to gain, get a handle of the office and zoning, since that was kind of my mainstay. I, I, I do have a business, I do work, so I'm not sure if this is something we could look at, maybe changing in the future, but supervising everybody and trying to deal with the other stuff, it's, it's going to be a lot on my plate. And that, that's why you were so right, I did, you and, so I don't know if that's something we can reconsider or.
A different day?
Yeah, but that, that would be my only comment, I was hoping somebody else can kind of take the one, but we can deal with that there. But, uh, not that I don't want to deal with the roads, I love you guys, but it's, it's a lot on the plate right now. I feel like at the buffet, it's just kind of. That's it, any other comments, announcements? Anything for you? I don't know if it's appropriate for you to comment, announcements, or, I know you're next.
Because the lawyers are reporting.
Okay, alright, so we'll move to the fiscal officer report, Mr. Rogers?
Alright, for the month of December, we took in 632,000 in revenue. We had expenditures of 4,363,000. And half of that was for the new park. Left us with a year-end balance of 3.828 million. I also have signature cards that need to be signed before we can sign checks tonight. And at this time, I would like to announce my retirement. As of January 31st, I will finish the 2021 books and get you started for the month. But I feel it's time for you to retire.
Well, I appreciate your service. I know statute totally, I think we have 30 days from then to, to find a replacement. So, we'll, we'll do what's left, but thank you for letting us know, I said, thank you for your, I know you've been around here for, for quite a while, so.
I'm 70 years old, I'm getting any age.
No, no, come on, make it to eight, that's a company chair. Is there anything else with your reports or announcements?
No.
Okay. Then we'll go to a motion to, do you have a question, okay, motion to pay the bills as presented. Johnson moves. I'll second. Any discussion? Roll call?
McKee?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Alright, and then we've got executive session, I would move to go into executive session per O R C. 121.22 G1 to consider the appointment dismissal or discipline of board appointees. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Johnson seconds. Can we just do a roll call, right? No discussion? Roll call?
McKee?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
At seven ten P M. Can I move to come out of executive session? Is there a second?
Second.
Johnson seconds, roll.
McKee?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Alright, the time is seven twenty-seven. I move to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Johnson seconds, roll call?
McKee?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
That is it. It is seven twenty-seven P M.